That just too public here.
Yes, I'm here. Tag along.
Oh, there's king cake.
King cake and cheese strips.
Yeah, I circulate it for my benefit.
Gonna gain five pounds on this committee. Look at this.
I guess Wright, Ray and Dana have their town home.
Trying to decide depending on how I feel.
Okay, folks, let's come to orders. Hello, thank you.
I can put on my shoes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the customary use committee meeting today. It is February 27th and it is four o'clock and we're at the annex building. Incidentally, if anybody came here looking for the legislative delegation thing, it's at the high school, it's not here, okay? And it's at 4:30, I think, okay? So, first thing we will do is I note there is a quorum, we have a quorum, and we will ask that we silence our cell phones as usual, please. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance, which I forgot to do last meeting, but listen. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, let me kinda, first thing, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Should've received them by now. Are there any comments on the minutes or recommendations or changes or corrections?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the minutes, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, no nays, thank you. I want to remind the committee that tonight is gonna be our last shot at making recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners about this ordinance. And if we do nothing, then what's going to happen is that this ordinance is gonna become active on April Fool's Day, April 1st. I didn't set that date, but at any rate, that's when it's gonna become active. So, the first thing that I would wanna do tonight is that I'm going to have Governor Mike and Tammy give them their 15 minutes that they missed last session, and then either you or Tammy can go and have full 15 minutes of comment, whatever you would like to say with regard to this ordinance, if anything, okay? And we'll, and we, last time, it may not be a problem with you, Governor, because I know you've been used to public speaking, but last time we broke it up and people took two different sessions, but however y'all wanna spend your 15 minutes, you can do that.
15 minutes of fame?
Yeah, your 15 minutes or whatever.
Need to have this on for recording purposes, is that correct?
Yeah, we're recording, oh, incidentally, again, let's try to remember to give us our names as we speak, you know, I know we've been bad.
I'm Mike Huckabee, and member of the committee. Judge, thank you very much, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. I'm probably not gonna need 15 minutes, I'd like to just take a few moments and say, I wanna offer my appreciation to all the other members of the committee, all of whom volunteered to do this, and maybe we all regret having done so, but the goal that we've all had is to try to find, is there a way, to make sure that everyone who wants to enjoy the beaches of Walton County can do so, but I think also we wanna make sure that there's some balance between the public's enjoyment and the ownership and the rights that go with that to people who have paid substantially, not only to own, but also to pay the taxes on the property. And a few weeks ago, I submitted to each of you an idea that I would love to put before the county commission yet again, which I have done, not a lot of feedback, but it would be at least an alternative to the immediate implementation of customary use, which I believe will end up, already is in litigation, and will likely remain in that mode for quite some time. One of the problems that I wanna point out is that in litigating this, we're creating a lot of conflict within the community that I think we'd all love to avoid, may not be avoidable, sometimes you can't, sometimes there's just no way other than going to court, having lawsuits and lawyers being the real winners in the proceedings. But if the county is serious about looking, is there any other option? Then one of those options would be to look at a voluntary program in which those who wish to participate in sharing their property would be able to do so. I think there would be a lot of beachfront owners, as long as there were reasonable uses of it, would not have a big problem. But for all of us who are on the beach, I think the issues are that there have been abuses, and it's not just abuses of our property, it's abuses of the pristine nature of the beach that we all enjoy, and I think everybody here is fighting to preserve, and whether it's the habitat for the turtles, whether it's being able to create, grow and develop vegetation which is protective of the beach, protective of the dunes, protective of the property, it's hard to do that when people are trampling all over the dunes, when people are playing frisbee through the sand dune fences that are built primarily to build up those dunes. Not all of us have seawalls, for us, the only protection we have is the dune, and spending lots of money, which many of us have done, to plant vegetation and to grow vegetation, it's frustrating when people pay no respect to it whatsoever, or when they go beyond that and leave litter, broken glass, even more unpleasant things that we're left to clean up. I know there's the question, well, that's an enforcement issue, well, it may be, but it's also still an issue for beachfront owners, and I'm not sure that we're gonna come to any conclusion that there's a majority here that will determine is what we recommend to the committee. What I would love for the county commission to do is to delay the implementation of customary use and see, are there alternatives? I don't know that it is on fire, that there's something that is so urgent that requires them to implement it April the 1st, be honest with you, I've had some heartburn about even the formation of this committee, it seemed that it should have been done prior to the adoption of customary use, not after the fact, and I've wondered, is what we're doing a legitimate exercise in participation in a civic event so that we can give advice and counsel to the commission who will actually listen to it, or is it a window dressing exercise so that we can be seen as having spent quite a few of our hours, and that the county can go ahead and implement what they've already determined they're gonna implement? I've raised some specific questions about some of the cost involved, I still think that that is pertinent, and should be, not just for the people who are beachfront owners, but should be to every taxpayer, whether they live at the Alabama line and the further most part of Walton County, or whether they live on the beach. How much does it cost to litigate this, with three lawsuits already, and I understand that, I'm told that there's insurance, but there's also other costs, the cost of consultants, the cost of the attorney that the county hired for the purpose of customary use, David Theriault, and we don't know what those costs are gonna total to be. I think taxpayers should know, what are we, what are we being on the hook for? And those of us who own on the beach, in essence, could end up paying both sides of a lawsuit. On one side, we're paying as taxpayers, and in the case of beachfront owners, the highest cost imaginable for taxes. We do it voluntarily, we do it knowingly, because we bought expensive property, but if we're forced to be on the litigation to protect private property rights, we're paying both sides of the lawsuit, and that's not comfortable. I also wanna use part of my time, and then I'll see if there's any question about it, but one thing I think that has been very unfortunate and frankly hurtful, a lot of beachfront owners have been called selfish and greedy, it's been characterized that the only thing that beachfront owners cared about was their own selfish interest, and that they were just a bunch of rich people that were afraid somebody might enjoy the beach. I grew up dirt poor, I grew up, first kid in my entire family that ever graduated high school, much less went to college. If there's anything I resent, it's resent being called some rich, greedy person who is not interested in other people, and I feel like that that characterization which has been categorically placed on beachfront owners is not only absurd, but it's patently false. I don't think any of us are selfish, unless that we're selfish about wanting to protect what we came here for, which was an incredibly pristine and tranquil kind of experience of life. Do we wanna share that with people? Of course we do. What we don't want is a carnival. If we wanted to have go-kart tracks and a gazillion chain hotels and restaurants and turn of them to souvenir shops wall to wall, we could've easily moved to a county either west or east of us, and we would've had all of that and more. We came to Walton County specifically and intentionally because of the serenity, tranquility, and because of the nature of what has been preserved as really a very quiet and wonderful place to be. For those who come to visit, we want them to come and enjoy it, but we also want them to respect it, and to respect that tranquility, and to respect that kind of serenity that I believe everybody, beachfront owner or every other Walton County citizen, should really want to preserve and protect. So, I wanna make sure that for the record, that I say that beachfront owners are not inherently a bunch of evil, greedy, selfish, rich people. In many cases, they're people who've worked darn hard through their lives, saved, made sacrifices, and the investment of property that is owned on the beach is not to see if we can keep people out, but to see if we can protect and preserve that which drew us here to the first place. And if I see somebody fishing down on the beach in front of me, I'm delighted, I'm more likely to go down there and ask him, are they catching anything? I've never told anyone, you get off, you know, get out of my yard, I've not done that. I've questioned people when they came up my stairway, got my beach furniture and called it down and just used it without any permission, yeah, I've said something. When I've rented chairs and had a sign that said reserved, and they came down and used them anyway, and spread their stuff all over, and were using the stuff that I was paying for, I have gone down and just politely said, excuse me, but would you like to pay me for this that I paid for, or would you like to just go ahead and call the beach company and see if you could get some a little further down? But that's, that's what I think has precipitated a lot of beachfront owners, taking actions that some would say were unfortunate and selfish, but I see them more as trying to protect what all of us, I believe, want to have, which is an experience in Walton County that is unique, different, but is truly a, an experience that once we lose, we can never get it back. And the one thing I hope people understand, we can always become a beachfront carnival, we can have vendors wall to wall, food trucks and jet skis, and we can get it, but once we have it, we'll never be able to get rid of it, and I hope people realize that there's something special about this South Walton County beach area, and we all ought to fight together to protect it, rather than fight each other with name-calling and accusations of selfishness, which frankly, with a few exceptions, I can't say that every beachfront owner is gracious and kind, because not every person who's not on the beach is gracious and kind. That's human nature, but I think overwhelmingly, the people of Walton County are good people and want there to be a solution, and I hope that the Walton County Commissioners will truly seek to bring some kind of resolve to this, rather than just to say, let it just go and we'll spend whatever the taxpayers' money will allow, and stay in court for as long as necessary, and the net result is a lot of people with their backs bowed up and their feelings hurt, and not the best long-term situation. So Judge, thank you very much for the opportunity.
My name is Tammy Mims, and I just wanna thank everybody.
I'm sure I need a mic in front of me.
My name is Tammy Mims, and I just wanna thank all of you for participating in this, right here, all our county commissioners for all they've done for us to try to litigate some of this, these lawsuits. I mean, the lawsuits, what concerns me most, we have the north end, we have the south end, it's not just about the south end, you know, because we're taxpayers too. The lawsuits concern me probably the most, they just, they gotta, they gotta stop, we gotta find a middle somewhere. I seen you on Fox News on the second, and you said, everyone should have the same freedoms and the same possibilities, and I truly agree with that. Our, when we get, we were afraid at the north end that we were losing our beaches, you know, the right to our beaches. Another issue, a strong issue that I have, is we have nowhere, there's not enough places for the public to even go to the beach, I mean, it's all, no trespassing. My mom, that's in her 80s, she had to go, she rode up and down the beach, and she couldn't even get on the beach. We have got to have more access to this beach, we have got to, and if we all work together as a community, not just the south end, the north end too, we have the greatest history here in Walton County, and I'm so proud to be a part of Walton County, and I know that everybody here is too, and I just wanna thank everybody for this opportunity, and I'm not a great speaker, but I'm just fine, thank you.
Let me, we're gonna do this tonight, we're going to allow the public to comment first, okay, and that you will be given your traditional three minutes. I wanna say that we brought king cake, and Beth brought these wonderful cheese strips from Meridian, Mississippi, so in the tradition.
Anyone that stands up to get one?
That's right, in our tradition, you know, this committee, we've done this, now I know, but the king cake, because those that y'all don't know, tomorrow is Mardi Gras in New Orleans, and it is wild. If you have never been to Mardi Gras, please go to Mardi Gras before you die, just one time, you know, go to Mardi Gras. It's actually been going on for 10 days. Mardi Gras goes on for 10 days with parades every night. There are estimated 80-something parades during these 10 days in the greater New Orleans area, and if you ever get a chance, go during Mardi Gras time, you'll, you'll do yourself a great favor, and anyone else that you bring, especially young kids, you know, and people will be hollering, throw me something, mister, and you'll say, I wouldn't be out there doing, catching that stuff. In 10 minutes, you'll be hollering, throw me something, mister, and stomping on little kids' feet, get him. Anyway, that's the reason for king cake, it's an old tradition, but we would like to open the meeting now to people from the audience, and again, I wish, to express my appreciation for all of you folks who've come and participated in this discussion. Anybody else tonight, we would entertain your, your comments.
Nancy King.
No, no, Miss James got me on a diet, so, a perpetual diet. Anyway, I would ask you to listen to all the comments, and at the end of the day, ask the Board of County Commissioners to postpone the implementation, but I would ask you for a little bit different reason than the, than the governor. I had a lady work for me once, and she said, good, fast or cheap, pick two. Well, we do fast and we do cheap, but we're not doing good, and the reason we're not doing good is because you've been given evidence that the process has been usurped, you've been told that, you know, you have to go by parcel, you have to do some certain things, and to just disregard that, all that's gonna happen is you're gonna lose those lawsuits that you're already in, the county's gonna lose them, and yes, people are gonna pay for them twice, they're gonna pay their tax money, and then they're gonna pay to defend the lawsuit. This is, and I know the judge and probably the governor, and there may be three other lawyers here, but it's not ripe yet, because we've short-circuited the process, and you need to go back, and what the Board of County Commissioners need to do is follow the exact process that the courts will tell them that they need to follow when this goes to trial, because if you don't, you may, for those people who believe in customary use and want customary use, you short-circuit this, you, this may be your only bite at the apple, and so if you're gonna waste your bite and say, okay, we're gonna fight and lose, when possibly, if you went back and you did this properly, you could probably get segments of the beach to be designated as customary use, probably not all of it, not some of the developments where they've had gates barring entry to the general public for years, but for parts of it, you probably could. Seagrove, definitely, Miramar Beach, south of the line, where they did the beach nourishment. Yeah, CEA, yeah, and so, no, not the, the beach nourishment line.
ECL.
Yeah, ECL, yeah, and so I would just ask, let's, let's take a pause, let's go back, let's methodically do it right, do it correctly, do it so that whatever falls out can be justified and defended. The other thing, if you don't do that, I would ask you to really look hard on the uses that you are saying are customary, because some of those in the, in the current ordinance, I'm not sure you can, you can defend that those are customary. All I would ask is, recommend a position that is defensible for this county in the long run, because right now, the either or is not defensive. Thank you.
I really appreciate the work that y'all have done, I've been here for.
Could you give us your name, please?
Richard Bryan.
Yep.
I'm, was pleased, all the meetings that I've been to, to see that people spoke their mind, and in the last meeting, I was pleased to see that there was some coming together that occurred there, but I agree, it should be put off. First of all, April 1st is not the greatest day, there's gonna be a lot of fodder made of that, no doubt, but the original decision, if you'll think back, had to, you know, it was in a political season, and I think maybe some of the motivations that were there might, I won't say be questioned, but might have been colored by what was occurring at the time, and I do believe that if we gave it time, and we maybe involved a lot more people in the conversation, we might discover things that we have not discovered so far, and again, I wanna thank you, I really appreciate your service.
Other members of the public? I know no other members of the public at this time wants to speak. Okay, we're going to bring up the motion that was discussed, that was brought up by Beth, and Beth, we're gonna let you go through this with Sidney, who has, no, our county attorney who has reduced the discussions that we had to a redacted, I guess you would refer to it as a redacted, recommended amendment to the, to customary use ordinance, so if you would reiterate your motion and, and read from it and see if, if there are any corrections that need to be made to the document that Sidney has produced.
Okay, the only correct, well, I'll repeat it first, okay?
Sure.
It begins with number four.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my name is Beth Clay, I'm sorry, and I'm beginning with number four on the ordinance, and the motion that I made was that only the following recreational activities are permitted for members of the public on the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities, walking, jogging, sitting on the beach, surfing, swimming, sunbathing, fishing, building sand creations. Well, I should've put an and, building sand creations, period. And then it included, there would be no tobacco, no use of tobacco or alcohol used on private property, period. Activities on non-private beaches.
Should be non-private instead of non-public.
Yes, uh-huh, that was, should be non-private. Activities on non-private areas of the beach, is exactly the way I'd worded it, are covered by the beach activities ordinance. And then we added that these, this ordinance should be, the rules for this ordinance should be promulgated not only to residents but to tourists, and the cost should be funded by the TDC. That was the. That was the extent of my motion. You ordered that, sort of, the judge, when we said they needed to be?
Well, I would just, there was a part in number one that I had observed was it said recreational.
Right, hereby recognized and protected.
Yeah.
In that first sentence.
Recognized and protected. And the only other thing that I had commented on was in the paragraph four, when it said, "And similar traditional recreational activities should be deleted." That's just too vague, in my opinion. Now Brenda, you seconded that motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you still stand and second that?
Yes, Brenda Reese. The only thing, I remember Lisa had a great list of the activities, and we really had some great synergy last week and worked together, you know, from four to eight o'clock. You know, we spent a lot of time working besides all the previous meetings. But the word projectile, I mean, that was addressing some of this, the frisbees that, especially on, that was, I thought, something that we added to protect the dunes. And the, so where were we on that?
Well, this is what I was going to call for now. Does anyone have any, any non-controversial recommendation to Beth's, well, for Beth's motion at this time? Do they have a recommendation that they want, that would be complimentary to Beth's motion?
And I wanted to add that, too, that we didn't add some of the things that were mentioned, I think.
Right, so now is the time. And we're going to see, if you will explain what your recommendation to amend her motion is, we'll see if she's accepting of that. If she is, it becomes part of her motion, okay?
Can I ask for a clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Just a quick clarification on it. These restrictions here are just on the public, on private. The private landowners can use their beach.
With anything they want to do that's legal.
I just wanted to say that.
Lisa Evans. Judge, I'd like to add to this at number five on the use of alcohol and tobacco. I feel like we need to include drugs, illegal drugs.
Okay.
Because alcohol and tobacco is totally separate from drugs.
Sure, sure, I agree with you. Beth, what about, do you have a problem with that?
No, I think that's excellent. I should have included it myself.
Would you include that in your second?
Yes, and I'm, should tents, the whole thing about tents was a big thing about excluding tents. Tents by the, on the private property by the public. Of course, the private owners could, of course, put up their tents. But I didn't know if that was a, that was a real big word. I thought that if this was the time to mention that or not.
All right, well, let the record reflect that Beth has agreed to include any other form of drugs.
A couple of things I mentioned last time, so this isn't me. I think the, no, I appreciate the, Mike started it. I appreciate the inclusion of swimming and surfing as customary activities. Obviously, I've been doing them customary for a long time. I think when we're talking about the dry sand beach, we might specify, like I said at the last meeting, placement of swimming and surfing equipment. Because really, I'm just talking about laying a board on the beach or putting your goggles down on the beach or your fins while you go into the water for a minute. It's meant to be, we can set something there temporarily. So I think the part about using the, using the dry sand area for swimming on April 1st, people will laugh at that, right? So possibly placement of surfing and swimming equipment there. A second thing, I did research, I do a lot of beach cleanups. I go walk up and down and pick up trash frequently, and I take kids out there to do the same and like that. Number one and two items on our beach is locally are cigarette butts and straws are the two most common things we pick up. Definitely an advocate of no smoking on the beach. However, unfortunately, in our current state climate, there's a preemptive law that prohibits banning smoking. So we may run into that, just as far as, you know, trying to defend the.
Well, what do you want, what do you want recommended?
Well, we're just trying to make something that will go through. I agree with no smoking on the beach, but it may not be defensible because there's a current Florida law that prohibits banning of smoking, just like it's prohibited to ban plastic bags right now. You can't ban them.
I think it's legal to ban it on private property.
Do you want to include Mike's recommendation in your motion?
Well, it doesn't have to be in there. I just want to let you know, I looked at that and I wanted you to know that there could be some trouble with that.
We could say, use of alcohol, tobacco, illegal drugs by members of the public on private dry sand areas. And that would probably pass.
That might be, might have a better chance.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's in the motion.
We're only talking about.
My last comment on that is, you know, I appreciate the things that the judge has helped us to understand about what's likely to stand up to review. And while I like including these things in here, the more specific we get, the more likely stuff gets thrown out. I think was one of the points that Mr. Hockbee was sharing on my case, too. So that's just a caveat. We've got to look at the pros and cons of itemizing things versus not, a cleaner law or ordinance is more likely to pass review. So just my thoughts on that.
Lisa, did you have a?
Yeah, I actually did more of revising. I like doing that, I guess. Editing must be my thing. Hi, Lisa Bausch. I actually went back to some of the stuff we did before. And I've talked to a number of different people about the idea of, you know, having exclusionary language or not. And I really understand the point about only having what you are including. But the problem that I see that we have is the public has become accustomed to doing certain things, particularly over the last five, maybe even up to 10 years, that if we don't put any exclusionary language in this, I believe that there's going to be misunderstandings and even more conflict than what we currently have on things like tents, umbrellas, that sort of thing, that truly are not customary use.
Well, what do the, let me suggest, we can cure that very easily. It says, anything other than these activities are specifically excluded.
Right, and that's basically what I have done here on four. I, it's reworded some from what you had, Beth, in your motion. But it basically says, the way I've worded it now, "The following are the sole uses permitted for members of the public on the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities." Okay, and notice, I've changed the word activities to uses. And I've done that throughout the document because we kept talking about the beach activities ordinance, you know, should have this or that. This is a customary use discussion. So I changed everything that said activities to uses so that it sort of clarifies that distinction.
Would you agree with that change, Beth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I agree with that.
Good. So, and then I simplified the walking, jogging, running to say traversing the beach. Because we already all agreed that traversing the beach was not a big deal anyway. Whether you're walking it, you're jogging it, you're running it. I've even seen a couple of people on these big wheel bicycles. If they're just moving across the beach, so be it. They're traversing, and that is a customary use. We know, to the extent that customary use exists, we know that is something that was done on the beaches. Sitting, we've got.
Would you agree to that modification?
It's okay.
Okay. Agree to that modification and second it, okay?
Okay, I'll stop between them so that I don't mess up them. Okay, we did the sitting on the beach. We did swimming, sunbathing, fishing, building sand curations. And this is where I covered your issue. And the temporary beaching of non-motorized watercraft used in the sovereign waters. Okay?
May I, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does that include boats pulled up on your private property?
Non-motorized, so if it, if somebody can do a kayak, a canoe. And this was my rationale for customary. Granted, they didn't have kayaks, but they did have canoes. So that was my rationale, that if we're going to say that people can, well, we have to say that people can do water activities.
We're only talking about private property.
Well, I mean, I think anywhere, yeah. Now, you all don't have to agree with that, but that was my resolution for.
Hold that, and then you can make that as a motion and a second, and we'll see if it will pass, okay?
Can you just, can you just repeat temporary beaching of?
Okay, temporary beaching of non-motorized watercraft. So that would be surfboards, windsurfers, kayaks, stand-up paddle boards, canoes.
What about sailboat?
Yeah.
They, well, I guess, where do they, yeah, no, that's not a good idea. So what did we say, personal? Are there personal sailboats? I guess my sunfish that I used to have was.
Yeah, I'd.
No, you're right, that gets tricky, so.
Well, okay, you know, just, but I, we were just kind of thinking about that over here. And realistically, you can't launch a big boat on private property. I mean, you can, you can't even launch a big, and you really wouldn't. And I know this because we used to launch a little boat, you know, on, off of the beach, and it had a motor. But you know what? It got to be a little too complicated. So you really, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I mean, certainly someone.
You accept that as a part of your.
And feel free to say no.
I like everything she said as far as my motion except the water equipment. I want to take care of Mike's problem, but.
Yeah, well, the surfing.
No, surfing.
The surfing took care of that, so, yeah.
What we will do is allow you the option to make a motion and second, hold back, you know?
No, I'm not going to make any more. That, that is, I just, I wanted to bring it. No, I just wanted to bring it up. Just because you want to bring something up doesn't mean that it's worth fighting for necessarily.
I want to make an observation, too, if you're not aware of the fact that seconding the motion does not mean that you have to vote for the motion. It simply says that I will give you an opportunity to discuss the issue, okay? So.
And I think we did. So, I mean, we didn't do it properly.
Yeah, no, that's. Well, we're trying. We're giving it one hell of a try. Anyway, you know.
Listen, Brenda, do you want to repeat that, or?
We're still entertaining suggestions that would modify Beth's motion, okay?
On section four.
Can you think? Since I was, I was really trying to address the issue of if a person could carry a surfboard or a stand-up paddleboard. And maybe there's a way to say that if it's something that can be carried by, hand-carried by one person. Maybe that's a way to do it or something. But I was just trying to find a way to address Mike's concern that if he's out there on the surfboard, he doesn't want to have to leave his surfboard in the water while he comes up and rests for a few minutes on the beach. That was really all that was for. So if we can figure out a way to do that, hooray. Otherwise, if you want to come surf in front of my house, you can't surf on the beach. But I do, I do want to make a motion later, so.
Sure, sure, sure. We're going to have, everybody's going to have a chance to make whatever motions they want to make. And then we're going to do it like we did last time. Everybody will have a chance to discuss it. We'll be giving everybody three minutes to discuss whatever new motions come up, okay? Yeah.
So is that all of that for?
Well.
Can I go back to the, we said about the tents and maybe the umbrellas, but do we, the projectile comment was really a lengthy discussion. It not only protected the homeowners, private owners' property and intrusion of, like, every week it's a new sweet little child that throws their frisbee up in their yard or whatever has it, or a sweet little child that throws it, oops, it's into our endangered bird nest, especially near, like, Deer Lake State Park, which is, you know, there are, all along the coast, the birding. So I don't know, this is the time that we, I thought we had added that word that about, there was a concern about the frisbee.
We took out, we took out playing beach games.
What word are we talking about?
Go ahead, Celeste.
I thought, I thought what we did is in excluding the playing beach games, that kind of covers all the different kinds of games. Because I'll be honest, there's also one where, you know, I see where there's a board and people throw stuff in the middle of the board, and it takes up the whole beach when people are doing that. So, I mean, I think, you know, that covers what, any new game that people could come up with and bring and cover the whole beach with, you know? Bring your bucket and your shovel, and this is plastic shovel. And, you know, that's traditional.
We may have to leave it then to the TDCs, we talked about, when they promulgate this and have their ads, like during their last political campaign, I couldn't turn on my phone and play my video games without getting a three-minute, or one-minute even commercial to say, "That means don't throw your frisbee into the game."
Well, you know, and there's where, if we want to go, and I think Mr. Hockbee mentions, you know, we are different. You don't come, this is the old-fashioned beach here in Walton County, where you come and you enjoy the beach. You know, if you want to enjoy every game that's ever been invented, you know, you just, you can go somewhere else.
Let's get back to where we are now. We're about, we're about specific recommendations on Beth's motion, okay, at this time.
Okay, I know last time that we discussed not having exclusionary, an exclusionary paragraph. And try as I might, I can't come up with a way that's a good idea. Legally, it might be, but from an understanding standpoint by the public and from an enforcement standpoint by the TDC code enforcement people, I can't find a way that I see that being successful. And I see that creating even more issues of conflict between people on the beach and potentially the beachfront owners or whoever gets stuck with it. So I see two ways we might entertain this. We could either make it part of the paragraph four, where it basically comes back in and says, "No uses other than those listed in paragraph four are permitted by the general public, including but not limited to the use of chairs, umbrellas, tents, other structures, and projectiles of any kind, including balls and frisbees." That's just the wording I put, you know, we already had the use of tobacco, alcohol, and now drugs. So do we put all, could we put all that in one paragraph? Or should it be broken into a paragraph of you can do and a paragraph of you can't, of not, it's, they're common uses. And that's the problem I see, is they've become common uses. That if we don't make sure that it's included, and I'm not saying they have to be those exact ones, but you get the idea. I basically put everything into the work I've done that I've heard anybody that's a beachfront owner suggest. That doesn't mean I'm bought in 100% to every single thing myself, but it incorporates every idea somebody's given me, and I'm just presenting them to you to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Lisa on, I agree that we, first of all, in our last meeting, decided that it might not be good. But then when I went back and read the ordinance again, and it refers to no tents as defined in the beach activities ordinance, it made sense to me that we probably should specifically say if we don't want tents or umbrellas, that we should say it simply because the activities ordinance says you can, and this ordinance refers back to that. And I think for the general public's understanding and lack of confusion, that we should say it specifically.
Do you like to amend your motion to that effect?
Yes, sir, I would if I could.
Do you second that? Have a amendment and a second.
What you meant there?
Okay. At the end of, "There shall be no alcohol, no tobacco use or alcohol use or illegal drug use. There shall be no erection of tents or use of umbrellas." And while we're talking, Mr. Chairman, this is a problem that Mike had, and he's repeated it every time, is the dogs on the dry sand. And I'm thinking, this would be the right place to talk about that. And I'll just give you an example. We were fortunate enough to be here this Saturday, and two different sets of people.
I'm not sure I understand.
Brought their dogs, and they just turned them loose. And I was sitting there and watched them, and they didn't clean up.
I had given that some thought, too. I would make, I would say no. I had given that some thought, too, and, uh, I wouldn't, I would say no animals.
All right, but because if they'll do them on the wet sand, it's clearly a race, there's no problem, so, and no animal.
Again, remember, we're talking about private property. Otherwise, on the so-called public beaches, it's covered by beach activities ordinance. But I've been thinking about this very issue because I think the governor threatened something about the dogs being loose, and so, and they can do, and, uh, you know, but I wouldn't limit it to dogs.
You're right, you're right.
I would just say no animals, so, you know. That's just a suggestion, I'm just popping off right now. I'm trying to keep my mouth shut. And I'm not going to even vote unless I have to, okay, Lisa, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, when we say no animals, will the sheriff's department, when people go to apply for a permit, to take their dogs on the beach? We have dogs on the beach in Rosemary Beach, so if that's a private entity.
Go ahead and know that they can.
Right, so dogs are allowed right now, and they're going to, they get permitted, and they can come there.
Well, you know, if you're private entity, it won't still allow, that's fine.
If you're talking about on that.
And if you're on your private property, you can do whatever you want to with your dogs.
Private entities. Private property, whether it be sanitariums or whether they be, uh, organizations like Rosemary Beach, they can do anything they want to do on their beach, it's not illegal.
Except when you have public traversing, so, I'm talking.
Public can bring their dogs on there. No.
Only on the wet sand, I mean, on the wet sand, we're talking dry sand.
Well, the wet sand is, everybody knows, we're, that wet sand is subject to the public's use of anything that's not illegal, roughly, you know? You know, the public can walk on the wet sand. I don't think any of us disagree with that. We didn't make that law, yeah, go.
Mr. Chairman, let me just, I love dogs, I don't want anyone to think I don't. I have two dogs, we have tags for them, we hardly ever put them on the beach. The reason I'm even bringing it up is that, um, all of us, whether we are on private or, or on the wet sand, still would have to abide by the county's requirement that you don't have your dogs on the beach before or after a certain hour, and that there are limits of the time, and you still have to have a leash, and you still have to have the tags, and I think that's important. I would like to also suggest that in the things that are prohibited, that fireworks be added, I know that's a Florida law, but one of the things that will happen is, even though it's against the law, it, Fourth of July, New Year's, if you don't think we have fireworks, you haven't been on the beach. I think one of the worst offenders are the sparklers, because people leave those wires down there, and how many people walk barefoot on the beach and, you know, subject, subject themselves to sticking a wire in their foot?
Yeah, and that should be covered by beach activities ordinance, I don't know whether it is, but if it is not, it should be. But again, I want to get back to the private property by just looking at it for interpretation of statute, statutory interpretation. You know, it's, it's my recommendation that you want to say only these things are permitted, and anything else is specifically prohibited. You know, that way, I think you get it good and clean, and, and at least, it's not ambiguous, as ambiguous to me, you know, uh, I'm always concerned about this constitutionality of ambiguity, and, uh, and it just drives triers of facts mad. You know, if I were to get some of the statute that ever come before, any other prohibited activities, that'd drive me mad, but at any rate, yeah.
Yes. You know, cats are one of the most detrimental things to our environment.
They can't read, they don't know not to come, where'd they go? What about these people with all the cats? I mean, let's be realistic.
I didn't hear.
That's what I say.
Cats, cats.
I said animals, that's why I said animals, you know? I, I, I never will forget my father, when I was five years old, brought home an armadillo for my, for a pet. We lived in Carpers Tristy, Texas, in a rattle of a place, he was working in the oil fields, and he brought home an armadillo for a pet, and I took him out in the back mud hole that we called a yard, and Mrs. Bates, our landlord, brought out her twelve gauge shotgun and dispatched him. And not only did she dispatch my pet, she cooked him.
An armadillo.
So armadillos, you know, I just have to.
Mr. Chairman, we call those possum on the half shell.
I know, I just, you know, but, but at any rate, I'm just trying to lighten things, but what, what I'm trying to get to here is if we have any more comments on Beth's motion, I'm going to ask her to try to reiterate it, and then see, she's got a second, then, then we're, we're going to vote on her motion, okay?
Just, I have a, I have a couple of comments, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Sydney. And then, well, then, then after that, then after that, we will entertain any other motions that we have, but this is an existing motion that's been here for a while, yeah.
Just, this is regarding items four and five, is that correct, or does it?
It's regarding what, what she, what they are.
I have some comments on three, but I'll save them.
Yeah, they're standing, standing off three. We're only, we're not talking about what's not. It's a combination of both.
Okay, Sydney, can you clarify things for us?
I will try my best, um, but really quickly, I guess, if we are going to have a list of prohibited items, if you guys decide to go that route instead of Judge McGee's route of, you know, anything not specifically listed as prohibited, um, if you do that, last meeting you guys had, um, Ms. Clay, as part of her motion, had suggested that we delete paragraph five, it was the original paragraph five, so if you'll see, um, the strike through.
Yes.
If we could, if we were going to have a list of prohibited items, I would suggest going back to that language in paragraph five, and then just list it after the semicolon, list the items you like.
Could we leave that out and start with no to, no tobacco use or alcohol, there shall be, oh, well, the following shall be prohibited, not recreational activities, but, I mean, could we start with that and go, I'm not trying to confuse it, I promise.
No, 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 that's fine, I just, um, so, the original paragraph five read, "The following recreational activities are prohibited for members of the public on the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities."
Okay, that's fine.
And then it had erection of tents, so if we want to add that back in, that's fine, but I think it'd be easier if we had that language, a colon, and then list everything that you want prohibited.
Okay, then we should start our sentence where we were saying no tobacco use there.
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of included in number four, is that what you're saying?
Right, and I have so far, no tobacco, alcohol, illegal drugs, and animals as the prohibited items. I wasn't clear about the tents, if we wanted to put the tents back in.
That was included in our, the way I understood, oh, go ahead, Lisa, no, no, you go ahead.
And I'm sorry, I have one more comment, just real quickly, I'm sorry, um, we can leave it in if you guys want, number six, it's the new number six, so it'll be underlined. Um, that was part of Ms. Clay's motion last time, and we can certainly leave that in. I do want to make clear, though, that there are, uh, I guess, activities as part of the beach activities ordinance that apply to private property as well as public property. One in particular is the leave no trace ordinance that I can think of.
So it's a public and private, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, we can leave that language in there, but we might, I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of the fact, if that gets changed later, there are some activities under the beach activities ordinance that apply across the board to all twenty-six miles of each, one in particular is the leave no trace ordinance.
Well, this wouldn't affect that, I don't think, would it, Mr. Chairman?
Can you, okay, that wrong, it has five, six, and then number five again, so was there some separation there?
That's what we deleted, deleted the, the last number five in the blue.
The judge, the judge recommended that we only stick to affirmative. Okay, I was making sure that that was the number in the. So we deleted it, but I'm now suggesting we put it back.
Well, before we, before we went forward with the motion, though, he, he also agreed on the alcohol and tobacco, so that was how we got that in there.
Wait a second.
I feel like with us putting in the prohibited activities, we are, we are going down a long road.
Yeah, a long road.
We would have to say no spitting, no.
That's right.
Yeah, that's going to be covered in the beach activities ordinance. I think we, we're talking about private property, we need to really hone in on what we are allowing people to do on private property.
And everything else is prohibited.
So, yeah, I, I don't even think we need to list, you know, tents, no umbrellas, that's going to all be, that's not it, like, like the judge said, okay, other than these uses are prohibited.
I'm sorry, I, I do disagree on those few things that we said, I think it's real important that we say no tobacco use, no alcohol use, no illegal drug, I mean, and just because the present ordinance refers to the tents and umbrellas are now allowed, I just think that it's such a tradition already that if we don't do that, those few things are going to be abused, and we're going to end up with a lot of confusion to the public. I, I just truly believe that. I think if we don't put the tents, the umbrellas, and actually the animals, those are the three things that I think are such a tradition, and people don't pay attention, that it's going to cause a lot of, cause to the sheriff, or a lot of that kind of activity, that's why, you know, I personally feel like it should be.
So we could.
And then we can stop it there, I agree that you don't want to go on and on and on.
It could be uninnable.
Well, I thought the term is invented, the term, uh, included, but not.
Celeste, don't you agree with that?
No, we honestly do not.
Celeste, don't you agree that it's so, I mean, it's already so used.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to agree with Beth, I think that, I understand what Lisa's saying, but I think that, for example, sunbathing, to some people would include it, putting up a tent, and, and so they're going to say, well, it says right here, I can engage in sunbathing.
Sitting on the beach with the same watch.
Yeah, so I, I do believe that you're going to have to be more descriptive as a protection, otherwise you're going to have conflicts out there, and, you know, owner and, you know, going to have it out with somebody who put up six tents back to back.
I think the key is to be precise, not let it ramble, say, no alcohol, tobacco, illegal drugs, tents, umbrellas, animals, and fireworks.
Just think about how the sheriff is especially able to help you, you know, his comments the other day are still ringing in my ear, you know, that this, this ordinance can significantly help law enforcement to satisfy you when there's something going on. So the more concise this is, the easier it is for law enforcement to say, now, listen, we have a rule about that. Concise is easier for that law enforcement officer.
Code enforcement, too.
Okay, uh, okay, David, you hadn't spoken yet, let's go ahead.
Thank you, um, and I have a lot of respect for the effort that's going into trying to come up with a very reasonable list of activities, and I think the list that's emerging is, um, it meets the criteria, that it's the type of peaceful, quiet activity that we would all like to see happen. Uh, my concern is, is that, as I've understood it, the fundamental concept of customary use is a list of activities that are apparently captured in Dr. Miller's, uh, report, they're ancient, and they've gone on for some time, uh, so again, while I respect this effort, it's straying very far away from the, the thing that is supposedly opening the door. Uh, I'll just use as an example, Dr. Miller mentioned more than once that horses were ridden up and down the beaches, now we're excluding animals. Uh, I'm not suggesting that we want horses running up and down the beaches, but I find it curious that we're picking and choosing, um, through this list.
With regard to private property?
Um, I, I don't, I, I, again, and I'm not going to rehash until later some of, some of my thoughts or concerns, but, uh, and I forget the list of three criteria, includes the word ancient's the one that jumps out, I recall, time immemorial, et cetera, those type of things. And, you know, this is as if we're, we're, and again, I have a lot of respect for the effort going into it, but it's as if we're trying to take a bitter pill, and we're trying to wrap it in peanut butter and bacon and whatever else, so that we can swallow it. And I guess it'll be my role on the, on the committee to say, whoa, I, I think that's straying from the, from the basic concept. The list is not one that we make here today, the list is one that was made over the last thousand years, period. That's my understanding of the concept. So, thank you.
Well, yeah. Judge McGee, well, let me just, can you clarify, because to me, it's like, with the customary use, I mean, there's a lot of things that used to happen, and what we're trying to do is include the traditional uses, but then we can, it's still customary use if we exclude the uses that no longer, for a whole lot of reasons, um, are, are no longer good beyond customary use, like horses on the beach, and, um, driving on the beach. Van Ness will tell you, you used to drive from Great into Dustin on the beach, you know? So, um, that's where I look at the customary use, it's like, we, we're saying, yeah, people did this, so we want to protect those rights, but these other, what may have been customary uses are no longer good for environmental reasons, or just, it's just not feasible, you know? And that's my, my take on it, I don't know.
And if they're illegal by some other law or ordinance, I certainly have no problem with it.
Well, it's like driving, and I don't think, I think it does say, uh, no horses on the beach, because when I moved here, I had a guy in my neighborhood that used to ride horses on the beach. I worked.
Yeah.
So, and I saw, I think they did, I mean, somewhere.
Ron, can you help us out some here, give us some wisdom?
Well, a couple things. Um, I don't know how, how wise, and I, I appreciate David's comment, because I was having a similar, um, thought process about, are we creating a new list, or are we tied to a list of customary uses? Um, the one that I left last meeting with, wondering if you might not want to revisit, was the one about eliminating playing beach games, um, and I had some language that I just kind of brainstormed as I was listening to the conversation here about projectiles and, and things like that, um, you know, there may be some support that playing beach games has been something that has been done on the dry sand areas since time immemorial, the question is what type of games? Um, and the language that I had just jotted down, uh, if you all wanted to revisit that, and this is one of the three comments that I had, Judge, um, was, um, "Playing beach games that do not endanger other persons or environmentally sensitive dry sand areas or dunes." I'll say it again if you're writing, uh, "Playing beach games that do not endanger other persons or environmentally sensitive dry sand areas or dunes." That would be intended to address the frisbees that wind up, uh, you know, on the dunes, or taking out sea oats, or, or things like that. Um, so that's, that's one idea, all right? A second idea, um, you know, there was a winter storm somewhere up in South Carolina or North Carolina, someplace like that recently, and, and it, it canceled a men's swim meet because the roads were so bad, and the collegiate men went out and performed a video for YouTube, which was quite entertaining of them, one was doing a freestyle in the snow, another was doing a backstroke in the snow, another was doing the butterfly and the breaststroke, and as this reads right now, that was what you could do with swimming and surfing only on the dry sand areas, uh, and that's not what you meant, and I, I think Mike mentioned that earlier. One option, instead of just saying, you know, that, that, uh, the dry sand areas of the beach, um, let me go back to the beginning, "Only the following recreational activities are permitted for members of the public on the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities," um, you have a con, just a textual conflict if you say swimming and surfing are allowed on the dry, dry sand areas, and I think what you mean is having a, a base point or something like that. Some possible language is creating a reasonable space without tents or large umbrellas, or you may want to define a six-foot umbrella or seven-foot umbrella, creating a reasonable space without tents or defined umbrellas for swimming, surfing, sunbathing, fishing. Um, that may be close to what you were talking about to. That may be close to what you were talking about, to trying to find a, a place. It may not. The last question that I had, or two final comments, on number six, I'm not sure that you're adding anything with the new number six. In other words, if you just delete that, I don't know that you lose anything. Because the beach activities ordinance, you know, speaks for itself. And then the final one, on whether to include a long list, there is a phrase, I'm sure the judge is familiar with it, a Latin phrase in the law that says, expresio unius est alterio exus. Yeah. Which, which essentially means that if you express one things or a group of one things, then what you're not expressing is intentionally excluded. So there's an assumption in drafting statutes and drafting ordinances that if you say only these items are permitted, then by not mentioning items that are prohibited, you're giving full force and weight to that list you're, you're saying. That's a matter of draftsmanship. If your policy is you think you want to make sure to include a certain number of specifically prohibited, obviously, that's, that's the committee's discretion, but those are my thoughts, Judge.
Beth, any recommendations out of that?
Uh, yes, sir, but Chuck, you want to speak before I?
Yeah, Chuck. You know, I thought the list, you know, we're getting almost too deep into this again. We're starting to climb down this hole. I thought the list that they originally came up with on activities that were proper on the beach was a very good list. I also agree that the public has to understand that the private owners have rights and that the private owners don't want to tend on their property. I think that's something that we need to specifically state, as do we with the drugs and, you know, some of the other things. I do not feel that beach games should be allowed on private property owners because I think that's too much of a stretch. Because I think you still have to remember that a private property owner still could be held liable for activities on the beach, and I think that might expand it too much. So, given a, a select group of items, like we said, the swimming, the surfing, you know, swimming and surfing, I agree, you don't do that on the dry sand area, but I think it's, people understand that, you know, you're on the beach, you're gonna go swimming, that's, that's something logical, it's like a tent, you know, same thing. So, putting those down of what they, the brief items of what they can do and the listing of the items that they can't do, and just those four or five items, what it is, and I agree fireworks should be put on there, because I think that's something that, I believe the young lady here had mentioned it once before, that she had a problem with that. And I can see where that would be an infringement. But again, what we're trying to do in this customary use thing, this is only for private owners. You know, it's only what the public can do on private property. It's not what you guys can do. I don't want to really go back. I mean, we could throw, say, throw this whole thing out and say, well, it's customary use. Well, then you could open it up to have horses on the beach or, you know, and the natives used to run around without any clothes on. I mean, you know, then they could run down the beach without clothes. If we're not specific enough of what can be done and few items that can't be done, just to clarify, for clarification, I think we're just gonna get so overblown again that we're just gonna go down a hole and, you know, we're not gonna get anything done. So, I would sort of like to proceed with the motion with the amendments as you present it.
I'd like to go back if I could, and then before.
Yeah, any other comments?
I agree with your comments about keeping it simple and clarified. I think these are essentially what the judge and chair and with us all along to clarify. I had a thought on the number six, but could, could that be a whereas clause? That says whereas recreational activities on our beaches are governed by the beach activity ordinance? That might just go in that.
You know, I sort of say, you know, I sort of go along before, they're two separate issues.
That's just something that's in the whereas, where we recognize it as a beach activity. As opposed to part of it.
It's just two separate issues.
I, I think, like we said in the earlier motion, that non-private are governed by, and of course, there will be a few, as Sidney pointed out, that we'll go over and do both, but we don't have, we don't have authority over that.
So, do you want to just omit it?
No, I don't want to omit it.
Do what?
I just didn't think we should omit the phrase that, that non-private activities are governed by the beach ordinance, like we did before. Mr. Chair, should I start back with the wherethes that you pointed out? Where there were two or three that you, okay?
Let's try to reiterate where the motion stands now. Okay, and see if Brenda still seconds it.
Yeah, before we add more stuff, we consider a motion to accept what's already been put forward, that we don't get that down?
Does anyone know what's exactly been put forward?
Don't you clarify it?
Okay.
Would you like to reiterate?
She's going to go through the motion that she can right now.
Okay, I'll do the best I can. Okay, at our other, last meeting, the chair suggested on number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, number seven, whereas, that we should say the county recognizes and acknowledges and protects the rights of private property owners.
Just adding the word broken up.
Right. We're adding, oh, that's on number seven, whereas, the judge said recognizes and acknowledges and protects the rights of private property owners. And then over under section two, number one, sentence number one, right before the word protected at the end of the sentence, the chair recommended that we say purposes is hereby recognized and protected. And then at the very end of number one, the judge also suggested to utilize the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities for recreational purposes and add as described in paragraph number four. Okay, on to number four. And I would like to adopt the suggestions that Lisa Bausch suggested. So Lisa, if you want to reread where we started, the sole following recreational activities, if you want to say, because we accepted all of the things that you suggested up to the non-motorized watercraft. So if you will repeat those for Sidney's sake.
The following are the sole uses permitted for members of the public on the dry sand areas of the beach that are owned by private entities. You read it? Okay. Traversing the beach, sitting on the beach. I guess since you don't swim on dry sand, we should take that out.
You can say swimming off the beach.
Yes, that's what I want, swimming or surfing off the beach.
Placement of swimming or surfing equipment. Placement of swimming.
All right, play, say it again, please.
Placement of swimming or surfing equipment.
Swimming or surfing equipment on the beach, okay?
Okay, placing, placement of swimming or surfing equipment. Sunbathing, fishing, building sand creations, and that's it.
And that was it, right, period, okay? And then we picked up, and if Sidney thinks it needs to be number five, and I believe she does, specifically prohibited on the beach, what, specifically prohibited on private property is the use of tobacco or alcohol and the use of, I'm sorry, and legal, and, and illegal drugs. And illegal drugs, comma, the use of umbrellas or tents and having animals or fireworks on private property. End of provision. And then, I guess, number six is that activities on non-private areas of the beach are covered by the beach activities ordinance. And then I guess we would need Sidney, a number seven, to say, these rules and regulations shall be promulgated not only to the residents but to tourists at the cost of the TDC.
You guys would like that added?
That's what we, yeah, yes, we would.
I have, if you look on the, on page four, there additional items. I said, the customary use of beach activities ordinances shall be properly promulgated and publicized to residents and tourists, the cost and obligation of which shall perform by the TDC.
Yes, that's part of it.
Does that become our number seven?
Or wherever she puts it.
Beth, just one other thing, the whole thing of swimming and surfing, also that the fishing concept, as far as obviously you're gonna stand on the sand, you know, as far as, is it understood, as with the surfing and swimming, that, that it's understood, just like the surfing and swimming that won't, you know, stand with your pole, you know?
Right, I, I think it is, but for clarity, we could say placement of swimming and surfing and fishing equipment.
All right, does everyone understand the motion? And Brenda, are you still seconding this motion?
Yes, sir.
We have had, we have had, I'm sorry.
One other thing, I believe also there's a suggestion to change activities to uses. Any time activities to use, change it to uses.
I changed that throughout the doctrine.
Do we need a motion then?
We approve that. We, we accepted that as you did it.
Beth accepted that, activities will be changed to uses.
Yeah, I have two words to try to add on the line two and the wherethes, the second wherethes, that we add the word use, whereas customary use of the dry sand areas are a bioeconomic asset of the state for, adding the word customary use there. Where the customary use of the dry sand areas are a bioeconomic.
And so just say whereas the dry sand areas?
Yeah, because the dry sand is not necessarily an economic value, it's the use of that sand, it's an economic.
Any objection to that? No objection, Brenda, you would second that? All right, that's added in. All right, we have, does everybody understand the motion as it exists now and the second? We've had a large discussion on this. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. The chair is noting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, if, in favor of the, of the motion.
Oh, he didn't?
No, no, he didn't, okay. Nine?
Ten.
Nine, the chair did vote.
And I didn't vote, I didn't have to vote. I don't have to vote, thank God. Hey, let me tell you, you know, when I see, when I sat on the bench, I had to vote every day on everything that came out there.
Mr. Chair?
And I used to tell people that on the, on the best day possible.
Was that a nay or an stay, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, all nays. David, you're the, the one nay vote in the thing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and chair does not vote, okay? Anyway, I would just go get off into some other thing about the courtroom. But I used to tease about every day that I walked out of the courtroom, I'd hacked off, I used more colorful language than that. But I hacked off at least 50% of the people that came there and it was more likely 80% of the people that came before me. But at any rate, all right, now we will entertain any other motions with regard to this ordinance that we have been asked to try to do something and send to the board of county commissioners. If anybody has a specific recommendation, please make it, see if we get a second, and then we'll discuss it. And the discussion will be, we'll each have three minutes to discuss and we'll go around the table, so we won't get into this round robbing kind of stuff, okay? Lisa, you have, Mike?
Yeah, and I'm glad we, we've moved through that part and have, you know, come to, close to it. And I'm glad I could share this part after, because I think it might be a little bit difficult to understand and it may not convince you of the need, but I want to tell you about a special circumstance that could come up. And this with regard to the, to the 15 feet, so it's number three.
Get your mind.
It's specifying the distance in the property, 15 feet. So, and this has only happened in certain years here in Walton County, but it's happened in other places where, you know, where I've been to the beach and the water was lapping up against hardened structures, seawalls or, or things like that. So, you know, we have to, for us locally, we have to think back to the, I guess this was a 2005 storm season where we had significant erosion and, and we had some places where the water was hitting structures. And in those cases, our rule as it stands now wouldn't necessarily legally allow people to still traverse, because there is no 15 feet. It's just water and seawall, or maybe a foot or two, but it's not 15 feet anymore. So, there, you know, there could be a few ways to address that, to where, if we're in that situation in the future, we could still have that right to portage. But it would have to be specified somehow that when that condition exists, that the public can still traverse.
Half-wet sand.
Yeah, Mike, you wouldn't have any dry sand, you wouldn't have dry sand.
So you're, you're golden.
Yeah, so you would be covered, yeah, you'd be covered, there's no dry sand.
Yeah, well, let's say it's two feet, you know, and then there's two feet of dry sand, but it's within the 15 of that boundary. Are you allowed to walk on the two feet or do you have to keep your feet in the, in the water?
Do you want to make this in the form of a, make it in the form of a motion?
So, yeah, I could, I've got some language, I could make it a motion.
Yes, please, make that, make it in the form of a motion, see if you get a second, and then we'll.
And so, you know, other states have addressed this issue in a few different ways and, and I don't know that we have the same luxury, but in the state of Oregon, they address it by elevation. So, any, all, anything from 15 feet elevation to sea level is how they define their, their beach. And so it becomes a matter of if and when that coastline moves and you have to be able to traverse that if you're within 15 feet of elevation, then, then you're legal. Here in Florida, 15 feet, but that's probably a third of the state, right? So, we might, you know, we, if we were to adopt that kind of language, it might have to be three feet. You know, three feet of elevation from, from sea level is acceptable for someone to traverse. The language I've got here is, is sticking closer to the 15 feet in, that's writ in the, in the ordinance existing, and I'll, I'll read. So the public at large, including the residents and visitors of the county, shall not utilize a 15-foot buffer zone located seaward of any permanent habitable structure owned by a private entity that is located on privately owned dry sand areas of the beach, except as necessary to utilize an existing or future public beach access point or ingress, or ingress from the beach. That's verbatim what I think our ordinance says now, right? Then, except as necessary, I did that part. And two, where any property within 15 feet of said structure is seaward of the mean high tide line, the public has the right to use and enjoy the public trust property seaward of the mean high tide line based on the public trust doctrine and Florida law. Notwithstanding this foregoing, at any time when the ocean contacts any armoring structure on the beach, the public shall have access to the dry sand beach property landward of the structure for the purposes of passing, portage, this is the word they use, portage, over and around the structure in the least intrusive manner possible, avoiding any damage to the landowner's property and beach dune system, as well as any unrelated violations of the landowner's rights. So that, that's the way, that's my motion, is that we add that language for those circumstances.
Have a second to Mike's motion. There's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second, Mike. Any other motions at this time? Yes, Lisa.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we, I don't know how we do it, we ask the county, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the April 1st date due to everything we've gone through, there's still so much unknown. The public education to me is, is key. What we write in this or what the county commissioners stick with if they don't take any of our suggestions, they still have to get it out there to the public. And I just think in the next 30 days, we're, we're 30 days from this thing being enacted, and I think it's got to be delayed.
Is there any specific time that you ask for the delay?
Mr. Bailey had mentioned till.
Would you want to put it in the form of, put something in the form of a motion?
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we extend it one year from April 1st.
We recommend to the county, that's all we're doing.
Recommend to the county that we, we have an, an actual date of April 1st, 2018.
We have a discussion on that.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
There's a second by David, okay? Discussion on this, we will give everybody three minutes, and we'll start from this side, and come on around, Brenda.
I'd be against that.
Okay, you don't have to use your whole three minutes.
I don't know what to say on this one, I'm gonna pass on my time.
Well, oh, we've got to be careful, we've, we've got to be careful on what we say and what we do, it, it's really not about us, it's about future generations. I don't think it should be like an year, you know, what I'm saying, but I, I just think that maybe we should be real careful with what we say and what, what we add, and that's it.
I think, because the time for customary use has come, I, I don't think we should move it any more forward, and I think that the whole process of education is gonna be an ongoing thing, and I think if this is delayed anymore, it's, it's, people still won't know, and the education will not begin until the ordinance is affirmed by the cust- by the county commission, so I think we need to stick to the April first, 2017 date.
Yeah, I guess that, you know, we spent a lot of time, we've had a lot of discussions, and I think if we just prolong the pain, or the, you know, the ordinance, it's just gonna be taken up all over again, and everything that we've done here currently is just gonna be thrown out anyway, you know, for the future, if we don't take a stand now, so, I would not be in favor of delaying it.
Mike?
Yeah, I would strongly discourage delaying, I think the timing of this is important, especially, I'm still thinking about our law enforcement officers and their ability to help you with all the, the private owners with the things that you're concerned about, that, that timing is set so that we can have the rules in place, so that we can all enjoy peace, more peace than we did last year, I think we're in agreement that it was, got difficult. Delaying wouldn't necessarily help that, perhaps there is something, maybe the fines could be delayed, though I think that might take teeth out that, that the private owners actually want there sooner, but maybe where we give the public some time, where they would be notified that maybe they're not fined, but it certainly wouldn't delay the inaction of the customary use. We, we need that peace this summer, I'd love to go into the summer season with folks getting along better than we did last year.
Elise.
To the extent that I think there's a real potential issue with customary use as an ordinance, the way it's been done, and this is, you know, goes back to just, I think that they probably got the horse ahead of the, or the cart ahead of the horse on passing the ordinance right now, but I do think that we're better off to have rules, whether we call it customary use or not, I mean, I, I don't know if this committee would be willing to examine the possibility of changing this a little bit so that it's not a customary use ordinance, but instead it's a, something like beach share ordinance, or to use Mike's thing, but, but I think we're, barring the, barring a judge saying that they're just striking down customary use, I think we may be worse off to have another whole year of problems and no controls, and my, my belief is without something that governs the use of the private beaches in this county, that, that's what we're gonna have, is more of the same, only worse, then it's, every year it gets worse. So, just clarifying the record, that I don't necessarily think that there should be a customary use ordinance, I do think there should be an ordinance that governs use of the public on private beaches, and if the only way we can do that is a customary use ordinance, then so be it, if it's struck down by a court, I'd still like to have rules for getting along on the beach, that's just my perspective and mine alone, so, that's how I feel.
I totally agree, it, I don't think this should be called a customary use, I, I'm all in favor for the rights of the private property owners and their public on the, their property, there has to be rules, there has to be regulations and guidelines, I just don't think we need to just shove this through so quickly. If the, the Tonorama case was in 1974, why is this just now coming up? If they want to, if they set in Daytona Beach customary use in 1974, but we're now in 2017, and it's the big issue, and we gotta get it pushed through, that's what worries me, I think we could slow down, even ask the commissioners for six more months, to really iron out what we've, we have come a long way in the last three meetings. Kudos to all of us, because we have done a lot, we've, we've nailed down a lot of things that I think we do have some rules that, that private owners would be happy with, but I, I just don't, if the commissioners get this and go, well, you know, it's done, and I agree with Governor Huckabee, why were we put into a committee after the fact? This should have been done the other way around, this should have all been talked about, public, I know they've had several public meetings, but I just feel like it's too soon, there's too many unknowns, if we could delay it six months even, doesn't have to be a year, but, but I do think we've come strides down the road with getting the rules of what needs to happen on private properties, 'cause that's why I joined this committee, is because I'm, was worried about the private owners and their rights.
Thank you. David Bailey, the very first question I asked at the first meeting was, what caused the county to feel that adopting this ordinance was necessary? And my comment a few minutes ago about the struggle that the committee has had in trying to define a reasonable list, and again, I have a great deal of respect for the effort, and I agree that the, the work that's been done is, is significant, I think it's very well-intended, but I, I think it's indicative that we have not answered the question of, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? I know we have a general idea, I believe that the county does, Walton County does have a problem, that the citizens from the Gulf all the way to the North End don't have the high quality of beach access that we all deserve, I think that there are probably a lot of different components to solving that problem, struggling with this customary use issue is certainly one of them. I noted that quite a number of, of the members of the public who have sat at each of these meetings, there are several people here that have been at every one of the meetings, Mr. Bob Brooke sent, he was unable to make this meeting, but he sent the document that Sidney forwarded out, and I think there's a lot to be gleaned reading his redraft of the ordinance, but several people tonight and at previous meetings from the comment have suggested that delaying implementation is a good idea, that we need to study this issue and make sure we get it right. Mr. Bagby's comments earlier, that, you know, the reality of, of, of these lawsuits is, is that, you know, we're having a little bit of a showdown now, and that if this is not right, it may, it may really seriously impact the county's ability to deal with the fundamental problem of improving access to the beach. The sheriff, I know all of us probably heard different things from the sheriff's comments, whenever you listen to someone speak, you know, you hone in on the things that you think that makes my point, that's human nature. And I heard a lot of things from the sheriff that indicated his staff is not ready to enforce the ordinance as written, he seemed to support some of the changes, of course, tonight we're talking about changes, so maybe we solve some of those problems, but I think we need to hear from the sheriff when, once the drafting, the dust settles and this draft is, is ready to go back to the county commission, I would love to hear back from the sheriff about what he thinks about the, the new version. And we have the unknown outcome of the, of the legal challenges, so, you know, there seems to be a lot of reasons not to rush forward, not to make a mess of what I very much agree with all, I think I agree with everybody here, I think we all agree, that this is a very, very serious issue facing our community, but a, the, the wrong answer could do us a lot of harm, and I think waiting is the right thing to do.
Thank you, David. Would you, thank you.
When Jim Bagby made the comment about the manner in which it's being done, I think that we need to take to heart, historically customary use is done to the courts, not the legislative body. It's always wrong when the courts and the judiciary act like they're legislators, it's equally wrong when the legislative acts as if it's the judiciary, and that's still gotta be resolved, and that's really what the lawsuits are about. I would suggest that maybe instead of a arbitrary year, that we don't define the time, but we ask the county to delay the implementation until such time as they have had an opportunity to fully vet that which we have spent weeks preparing for them, which they charged us to do, to give them recommendations, our recommendation is, look at what we've done, give careful consideration, ask the sheriff how he would enforce it, does this help or hinder his ability to carry out the law enforcement responsibilities that he's charged to do? How does this better help the people access beach activities in a clearly defined way, or does it not? But I think the county owes all of us, not just on this committee, but owes all of its citizens a more careful implementation, and whether it takes them an extra month or an extra year, I don't know that we should even make that recommendation, I'd like to make a substitute motion, and I would move that we ask the county to delay implementation and enforcement until such time as they have had an opportunity to review the work of the committee that they created, and to report back their findings as to the validity of our recommendations, including the input from the sheriff's department.
Would you accept that as your, as a substitute with a second?
Yes.
Okay, that is a substitute motion, do we all understand what the motion is now? Any other comments, Governor?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, do we all understand what the motion and the second is now, the substitute motion is, that, Governor, would you go ahead and state it again?
Basically, that we do not put a time limit, the substitute motion essentially is that we request that the county delay the implementation and enforcement until such time as they have had an opportunity to review the work document that we, the committee, that they charged with this responsibility, have had time to review, to vet, and to report back on their findings as to its implementation, including the input from the sheriff's department, whose duty it would be to enforce it.
All right, normally, as the chairman, I have not made any comments, by Robert Hughes of order, I am entitled to comment, and at this time, I would simply observe, I would simply observe that it's been my experience that continuing an issue like this simply kills it, and sending it off to another committee would kill it, continuing would kill it, that's my comment only, now, all, all of those in favor of the now amended motion, please signify by raising your right hand in favor of, one, two, three, four, I count four in favor, all those opposed, would you please raise your right hand, one, two, three, four, five, six, the motion fails. Okay, thank you, any other motions with regard to the task that we were given, is to make recommendations to the commissioners regarding this customary use ordinance?
This is, this is not a huge variation from what Mike said, but one of the things that I had come up with, I, that I'd come up with on this issue, is the promulgation issue you mentioned, so what I ended up wording it as is, this ordinance shall become effective on such date as the Board of County Commissioners finds that this ordinance is properly promulgated, and that Walton County, Walton County Sheriff's Office and the TDC Code Enforcement Department is prepared to enforce the provisions herein, but not later than December 31st of 2017.
That's a motion.
That was my best attempt at one.
Good attempt, but second, he's second to that motion. There'd be no second.
Okay, that's fine. Can I make another motion that has nothing to do with that, or does somebody else want to try for another one related to this?
No, as long as it is, wait, as long as we're talking about this ordinance and our recommendations to the county commissioners, okay? They're all kind of a problem down here, won't solve.
No, they won't solve those.
Well, could we make some recommendations as to the promulgation, or the sort of letting people know if we've got some ideas, spend a little bit of time saying, you know, and I could say it was, it was very enlightening hearing from the sheriff, but if we've got some thoughts and ideas on getting information out, that we could make some recommendations on that, I don't know if that's something that, that...
If you have a specific recommendation regarding promulgation, you may propose it right now.
Well, yeah, you know, well, I just, and this doesn't have to be added to the ordinance, but I'm just, I think we need to make sure we have the proper signage at the walkovers that are typically walkovers where there's a lot of private property, that's not something...
If you have a specific recommendation regarding this specific ordinance of customary use, regarding promulgation, go ahead and make it.
And I wouldn't say that this was something that would be in the ordinance, so maybe it's not the proper time and place for it, but just a suggestion to the commissioners in regards to how they get the word out, and that's not...
If any committee member here can go to the commission here, even they can have recommendations, so...
All right, good, 'cause I don't want to muddy up this ordinance, you know?
Okay, question? Didn't we address that in this, where it said beach activities ordinance should be properly? Yeah, I thought that was already addressed.
However, however they see fit, I just thought maybe as an addendum, we could say, these are some of our thoughts, that this would work or not, and if it's...
If you have a specific thought that you want to recommend, that would end this ordinance in some way, put it in the form of a motion in the report, David, you have
Yes, sir, I was just, you, you mentioned what, what we are forwarding on to the, from this committee to the county commission, and I think you spent, at the first meeting, you spent some time talking about the format, whether there would be a, a majority opinion, a minority opinion, and that sort of thing, and so, you know, I don't know, this would be something appropriate to put in the form of a motion, but, you know, the, the document that we forward, I believe it should include the, all of our meeting minutes, I would like it to include the document that was distributed by the county attorney's office that Mr. Bob Brooke put together.
I'll, I'll get quick, and I think you're gonna get ten minutes too, to give us, state your reasons on the record, why you voted nay on the...
Okay, and so, and so the committee's...
And five hundred words we voted on.
Yes, okay.
To clarify, we all still have that.
Okay.
You say, you still have the right to write five hundred words if you wish, okay? And you're gonna get ten minutes as well, because you were nay on the motion, yes, any other motions?
I have a motion, do you have a motion?
You go ahead.
Okay, I, this, this, I wrote to try to address the issues that condominium associations, resort areas, et cetera, have, and also people that live near accesses, that are the first lot or two around accesses, so that's the, your context. So that's your context. Whenever the general public's uses listed in paragraph four of this section may infringe on or interfere with the right of the property owner to use their deeded property, upon the request of the property owner or the property owner's legally authorized agent, the general public shall move or relocate to the extent necessary to eliminate the infringement or interference. I don't know if that helps, but, you know, it basically, I had, I had a lady mention to me that there's, they have a condo association, and, but they're sandwiched between public accesses. And she said, if every, if most of their condo people are there, which they apparently are from time to time at least, she said, if all of a sudden the public is coming in from both sides, we won't even have room to use our own private, you know, our own private beach. So I don't know if this might help, and I know David had expressed real concerns about, you know, if Rosemary has five rows deep and all across their beach of vendors, that vendor setups that are, they're entitled to it, it's their property, and that's what they do with it, something like this...
Putting this in the form of...
Yes, sir, that's what I read.
Is the motion, is there a second to the...
Oh, sorry.
Second. There's a second to the motion, discussion, three minutes each.
I believe that not having tents and umbrellas and those type of activities in here, this customary use ordinance that we have, those type of activities that are allowed, will help mitigate that, because people are going to go to places where maybe they can have their tent, if that's what they want. And a lot of the problems that we have come to were caused by the tents, where people came in and, like on those properties, and staked out, you know, that. So I think a lot of that problem has, will be solved with this customary use ordinance and the authorization that we're giving the sheriff and the code enforcement and others to follow through on that. And then will be further promulgated by the TDC aggressively advertising in all means, whether it's in radio, TV, something that pops up on their phones every time it turns on, if you're in the Walton County area. I think that will take care of that.
In full disclosure, my property is next to an access, so I have also suffered some of the instances that Lisa has described in her motion, so I have to support that, particularly on any kind of holiday. I mean, we have people who aren't willing to walk 15 feet, less 20, and so they just congregate right there on the lot, my lot, the lot next, on the other side of the access. So I'm in sympathy with the people next to the condos, too, so I would support her motion.
Well, here's what I think about. I'm sorry. Here's what I think about, is like, there's not enough public access to begin with, you know? So it puts the condo owner, puts Rosemary Beach in a bind, it puts everybody in a bind. And until this issue is solved, there's going to be these problems until the public access is solved. And it's just plain and simple, everybody's going to have problems. That's all I got to say. Well, the language and the way I heard it, what you read, Lisa, is, would put us back into a situation where a private property owner would say, there's somebody out there, and they're infringing on me, you know? And so it puts the sheriff in, I guess, the same situation that he has been in over the past several years, whereas private property owner is complaining about something that he can't really define. So how do you define, I'm being infringed on, you know? So I just feel like that would make it confusing and muddy up for the sheriff and everybody, you know? And I think Brenda had some really good points that, you know, people are, if they're going to go, well, I can go down there, and I can drag all my stuff, that's what they're going to do generally, you know? And I do, just the fact that someone can't have an umbrella, that's going to keep people off the private property, because they're, you know, you can't stay down there more than a half hour if you don't have some kind of cover. Yeah, I don't care how much stuff you got smeared on you. So that's, I think, I just think that, that takes what, some of the clarity that I feel like we added and muddies it up. So I wouldn't be for it.
I'll pass, Judge.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, your point is well taken, and I think before we had done all this work and discussion, it might have been more valid than now. I mean, we've really, like they've mentioned, we've really addressed a lot of the things that pertain to that, and I think it really would muddy the customary use ordinance to add an amendment, worded like that. So I do think that the things that we've been implementing in the currently revised ordinance will significantly help with that, to add that amendment, also will make it very difficult for the law enforcement to determine when, you know, when they can help you and when they can't.
Okay. My feelings are not hurt. The purpose is just to make suggestions and see where they go.
I pass on this also.
I supported the motion because I believe it is what customarily has been done, and I would like to see that the behavior, both directions, in our, and I'll mention it again, our larger effort to ensure a higher quality of access to the beach, it's important that that tradition be continued. Thank you.
I'm not sure the motion is necessary in light of, or that the proposal is necessary in light of what's already been agreed to, and it may, in fact, muddy the water. To Tammy's point, I do believe that an issue is more public access. If this committee were to do anything else, it would perhaps be, and Judge, I may wish to make a motion to that effect, in fact, I think I'll use my time to do that, I move that this committee encourages the county to seek additional property that they can purchase and create specific public access points that would include parking and restrooms, and would further...
Governor, if you don't mind...
Yes, sir.
We will entertain that motion. I would like to dispose of the motion on the floor first, but then I'm going to come right back to you for a motion. Okay, thank you. Any further comments on this motion?
No, sir.
Okay. I agree, well, you understand the nature of the thing. Well, I'm at Eastern Lake, you go out, and there's private property to the east and to the west, and it's very dense there. But I would agree also that I think we have, to whatever extent we can, tried to solve the problem by recognizing that the private property has special conditions on it, and private property owners would be right to come down and say, take your tent off, or take your dogs away, or all of the other prescribed things that we've done. But I think that the motion would simply, again, clutter the issue up, and so, at this time, does everybody understand Lisa's motion and the second? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. All opposed? There were three in favor, and I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed. Okay, the motion fails. I'm sorry, Lisa. Governor, you have the floor for a motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that this committee recommend to the county that it explore purchasing private property for the purpose of beach access. That would include parking and restroom facilities to give the public additional access points, and that they would further make every effort to work with the existing state parks to create greater access for the general public to those areas, and work in a cooperative endeavor to ensure that there's also parking, restroom, and facilities that would be made available to the general public.
Any second to the governor's motion?
Second.
There's a second. Okay. Discussion.
I was arguing first.
Well, he just, he kind of keeps things in order a little bit.
And I'm not going to even worse with it, it sounds great, and my concern would be with the state parks, because I live near Deer Lake State Park and have a state pass to all the state parks in Florida and love them, is what I've observed is that they don't have, the state does not give the funds to have enough state park rangers to really service those areas. So, not that that would keep me from voting for it, just, I want to raise that as a concern just to this group and for the minutes, that, boy, we really need our county, and I know they have some contracts with different entities, public, private, county has contracts with the state parks, but then there is, there's got to be some additional funding for supervision and enforcement of this customary use ordinance. And there's, especially like Deer Lake State Park, and of course at Rosemary Beach, but then next to that, you have Camp Palan, and part of that is in Walton County, even with Lake Powell there, part of that lake is in, that there are many endangered, and many endangered birds that nest on the shore. So again, making, if we, as we're encouraging more people to go to the state parks, there's going to be more and more support needed to supervise those areas and to protect them and to somehow, if they need to pay for, help the state pay for a staff person to protect those areas. That would be something not, it's not a game killer to me for being in favor of this motion, it's just an area of real concern that I have.
No comment? Sure?
I have a comment. Yes, I got a comment. It's just like the county, okay? They took over Morrison Springs. I don't see why we can't purchase. Look how much money TDC gets. I mean, we could purchase all kinds of property up and down the beach. We're not, we want to keep our state parks, state parks. We want county access to our beaches. You know, we, we want as many front beach miles as we could possibly get. You know, we, we're thinking about, not us here, not our homes, which I don't have, but y'all do, we're thinking about our grandkids and future lineage is what we're thinking about, and it just, it just goes on and on. It's not about us. And county, the county, if they can buy Morrison Springs, they can do a lot more, and that's what I recommend. Thank you, Governor.
Yeah, and I agree that the county needs to buy every inch that they, they can buy on the beach, and I've been in the commissioner meetings and stood up and endorsed those purchases, and I've been at some meetings recently where they continue to look at property. And I, so I think they are, they are doing that. But as far as the state parks are concerned, I share some of Brenda's concerns, that the state parks are governed by the state rules and regulations, and the purpose for which the land was acquired, and the state, each park has a unit management plan that is revised every 10 years. There is always, the general public can come and comment, there's always someone from the county represented there, and it's still up to each individual state park to allow for the uses that they're sort of mandated from the state, and with TOPSOL, they do, the county at TDC pays $25,000 every year for people to get into that park for free. Grayton Beach chose, they said, we don't want to participate in this, because we don't have to, because they do have days when they have reached their capacity. And as Brenda says, you know, Deer Lake State Park is a really special, fragile place, and I think it's open to the public. I don't even, what, they have an iron ranger there, correct? So it's like, or there's not a ranger there? Yeah. So, so it is, it's not like they're, they even have a gate. So I don't feel like we need to endorse to the county, sort of, they work with the state parks, but I don't feel like we need to encourage them to plan for the state parks, because that's the state's job. And I think, I've been there, I've stood up in county commission meetings, saying, buy, buy as much property as you can, you know, and I've seen them pay more than appraised value, and I'm okay with that, because as, if you've lived here a long time, you look at property and go, I can't believe people are paying that much money. And then two years later, it's, the price has doubled and it's still selling. So, anyway, I, I agree that we need to encourage the county to buy more.
I'll pass. Chuck, pass.
Mike?
Well, first off, I love this motion, absolutely pro the county purchasing more property for all the reasons that we've just heard. I wonder if, Mike, if you would consider separating your motion into two segments, and we might have a vote on, on the encouraging the county to purchase more property, and maybe a separate motion for the park. I would have concerns about the park, but honestly, I think the parks are our safety net locally. We're so fortunate to have them. I think we're, you know, our development is somewhat unriddled, and we risk the enjoyment, the peace, the beauty of our area here. I don't know if we'll be able to reel that in, and our last safety net locally is those parks. As much as I love going into the park, and I use them for all kinds of things, and having served on a recreational use committee for similar park in St. Andrews or in Panama City, I'm totally okay with them telling me, you know what, we got too many folks in there today, please, we, you know, we need room for the snowy clover, or we need room for the beach mouse, or we need room, you know, for this tree or this plant. So I would rather rely on them for that. So, for that reason, I would encourage you, or I don't know how, can I make a motion?
No.
I would encourage you to consider separating your two parks, and you might find that you have a lot of support for your motion.
To, I'm in favor of your motion, to the extent that the parks are really good about protecting themselves, so I'm not worried that they'll get overburdened, they'll just say no. They're good at it and good for them. But I do believe the county is already very actively trying to find beachfront properties that make sense, that are in areas where they can buy them, and not run into all kinds of legal issues again. So I'm in support of that, and I share all those concerns about the parks, but I genuinely believe they have management plans, and they have very strict guidelines, they're going to protect themselves.
Yeah.
I agree with your motion. I've said all along, I think that the key to this is buy more property. I think the county, instead of spending millions and millions and millions on these lawsuits, they need to take that money and buy more land and be done with this. If the state parks are not able to be used, because I did bring that up before, and I'm not a full-time resident here, so I do understand, I would love to see the state parks stay a state park, if the option is for more land could be purchased with, or purchased by the county.
I support the motion, as I'll indicate in a second, I guess, when we vote, but, you know, I'm really, I would love for somebody, if not us, to spend a lot of time digging deeper into how the state parks, the role the state parks play in our community. I acknowledge the concern that the state parks are a very special place and that they should not be overburdened, but I still am having trouble wrapping my head around state parks that were created, and I believe Great State Park came into being, I believe it came into being through a purchase by the State Department of Education. It was a little bit of an odd beginning, but it, I think it was in the '60s, it actually was created as a state park. And it just strikes me as odd that something that was created in 1960 is being treated so differently. I don't understand why the customary use that predated all of the state parks all across these beaches is suddenly being, nope, we're not going to do it here, we're going to focus on the private property. So it's, I don't have a problem having two ideas in my head that don't match, can make you crazy sometimes, but it's, I think we need to study it more. But I do support the motion.
Let me try to alleviate some of the concerns...
Let me try to alleviate some of the concerns that you expressed, because I think some of you think that I, my motion indicated that the county should virtually usurp the state parks, that wasn't the motion. The motion was that the county would work with the state parks, which means the state parks still operate under their own rules. I don't think there should be any discomfort whatsoever, because the county can't tell the state what it's going to do with its park, but the point being that there is at least some use of the state park. And instead of taking land that is currently owned by private owners and overusing it, use to the extent that the state parks remain for their intended purpose, including the pristine areas, whether it's a bird habitat or any other purpose that is already deemed, use the state park areas as would be appropriate and fitting. So that's all it would be. It in no way asks the state parks to become anything other than what they are, but just to be utilized by the public, because, folks, the public already owns the state parks. But how many people even know how to get into them, or maybe that's too expensive? Maybe we figure out a way like TOPSOL has done to pay for that? Uh, it may not be practical in all the state parks. If it isn't, then the county has no obligation to do anything other than to explore the option. So I, I hope that my motion, you understand, is not to say, let's see if we can just tear the state parks up and ruin them. Heavens, no. You know, I don't want to do that anymore, they don't want to ruin any of the beach. So I, I hope that you can in good conscience realize the motion in no way infringes upon the current or future uses of the state park.
Governor, as I understand, the thrust of your motion was to suggest to the county commissioners that the county acquire more accesses with facilities and parking spaces and things like that, not necessarily at state parks.
Sure. Again, the state parks was a secondary port as, as a recommendation to work with, that was the specific wording of it.
Right.
But the main area is purchase land that is available, because once it's purchased by private property owners, it's, you know, it's probably going to be in perpetuity unless that private property owner wants to sell it to the county. If the county wishes to purchase, the more they purchase now, it's not going to get less expensive, the one thing I think we can agree upon. But with the county owns, let's say, parcels of land, then it has every right to create parking and restroom facilities, one of the ways in which the public would be better served is to have full facilities at a beach access. A beach access where they can't park and cannot use a restroom and have to drive a couple of miles to the use of a restroom unless they use the Gulf itself, which I don't think any of us would wish to encourage. I mean, we're not really helping a whole lot unless we create full recreational activities that the public can enjoy that does not conflict with anyone.
I was just, I was just asking for clarification, because my comment now will be, we've been here about 20 years, and when I first came down here, Malcolm Patterson and Vanus Butler Jr. lived down at Grayton, and I got to meet them, and we went down to the beaches, the beautiful beaches, and I was happy to talk to them socially one time, and I said, boys, I said, man, if I were you guys, I would have stood at that intersection down there at 283 with my shotguns and kept me out of here, kept the rest of us out of here, but that time's over with. Since then, Malcolm Patterson, it was one time the director of the TDC, and Malcolm and I and quite a few other people, other successors, Jim, have had long discussions, and from the very beginning, I told the TDC representatives, you guys need to identify the, as I understood at that time, there was 176 accesses along the beaches of South Walton. And I said, you guys need to go in there and identify these things and preserve them legally at least, you know, don't, don't allow the continued encroachment into these accesses, and you may not want to develop all of them, you, but as time goes on, you're going to see where you need to do this. You need to give the public more dispersed access to these beaches, this 26 miles. You take out the six miles of parks, we know where that's going to be. Anyway, I, I agree with your motion, support it this time, and that's my comment. Does everybody understand the motion and the second on the floor? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand, one, two, three, unanimous? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All abstain. Yeah, I'm on offense, yep.
Okay, Mike abstains, okay, we're getting this down pretty good?
Yeah.
And, and chair doesn't vote, doesn't need to. Now, we're at a point, any other motions at this time regarding this, this charge that we have here to discuss customary use?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to monopolize the motions, but I, I've spent a lot of time on it, so I at least want to throw it out there.
Ten minutes coming up.
Do you want your 10 minutes before I do this, David? This should, I, I hope this room won't take long. Okay, under section three penalty provision, you know, it says a violation of this chapter shall constitute a civil infraction punishable by a fine. I would like to see this committee actually vote on fines, whether they are part of this actual ordinance or they, there's a different way they do it where they-
With a resolution.
With a resolution for the fines, but I'd like to see us-
Part of it.
That's what Sidney just said, is they can do a resolution, we can refer to it here, but you can do a resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm, I'm making, um-
Sorry.
I'm making suggestion, just to see how the committee feels about this. First offense would be by a warning citation and immediate correction of, of the violation, which just means somebody takes down their umbrella or tent or whatever they're doing. The second offense, by the same person, of course, by a fine of $50 and immediate correction of the violation. Third offense, by a fine of $100 and immediate correction of the violation. Fourth offense, by a fine of $250 and immediate correction. And fifth and each subsequent offense, which I can't believe anybody would do, would be $500 and correction. I, I just genuinely- Or to have a resol, a resolution for fines, whichever, however it's best to word it legally.
Sidney?
I, I think a, a fine resolution would be more appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
There's, there's a motion on the floor for this committee to make a resolution recommending the fine structure as, as Lisa was outlining here. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second to the motion at this time, discussion? Pass.
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 Mike?
I can't say I completely understand, but one concern I do have is if we're, if we're deciding what the fines are, keep in mind that fines are, they're not equally distributed, and so for persons who have less income, the fine is a bigger impact. I'd like to have a line that said, community service is also acceptable, and I think community service even does rich folks well to do. Occasionally, when they make a mistake, so anyway, I want to make sure that part of this, but I don't, I still don't, I don't understand exactly the-
Okay, well, the, the logic-
The difference between that and the language is already there, is what I'm having trouble understanding.
Oh, it's just specific.
It's specifying.
It, it talks about first, second, and the, the problem I see with any ordinance or any law or any, anything, is if it has no teeth, people ignore it. It's just that simple. If there're no, if there's no teeth to it, it's ignored. And so, you know, this, for somebody to do this means that they literally are committing the same offense repeatedly after having been noticed and then fined a fairly, you know, not a nominal, let's say, and I'm not opposed to anybody making different suggestions for the numbers, I just think we ought to recommend it as opposed to just saying a fine up to $500.
Thank you for the clarification.
Because that, you know, that could end up being $10, and somebody decides, hey, I'm going to use an umbrella and a tent and whatever down here for $10 a day, that doesn't, that's cheaper than the vendors are. So that's the logic behind my motion. Thank you, yeah.
I do agree we can get specific, but I don't like giving them five different chances. Number one is a warning, two is $50, three is, I think you said $100. It's kind of like, you know, maybe three strikes you're out, but, you know- No. You know, I, I think you could just specify, I do agree this is a little gray area of not to exceed $500. You could say maybe the first one's a warning, second one is $100, and the third one's $500. That's going to stop them very quickly of doing the wrong thing if they can't do that. I like the idea of community service, but here again, we've got the, who's going to- Who enforces this? The sheriff department is already probably so thin right now, it's just one more thing we're adding to them. Okay, this guy did it three times, he's charged $500. This guy did it one time, he gets a warning. I like the idea of being specific and getting out the not to exceed $500, but I don't think five chances.
Lisa, I love you a lot, but I'm going to have to be against this motion for the simple reason, I think it's taking away the discretion that the law enforcement and frankly, a judge should have, with deference to the judge. Sometimes the manner in which a violation is made should determine the level of adjudication. And if somebody is innocently and didn't really realize they were violating it, you know, I get it, it's a warning, but the second thing, we complicate this by making it one, two, three, four, that means the sheriff has to keep up with how many times this person has been on one end of the beach, then another, then another. That's a real complication. I think it ought to be the discretion of law enforcement, the discretion of the judge. I think the county has given it up to $500, they can make it 10, they can make it 100, they can make it whatever they want to, but it ought to be applicable to the specific infraction. We're, I think, getting into an area that is beyond our purview and probably maybe getting a little over our skis on that one, so I, I would recommend the defeat of the motion.
All right, does everyone understand, does everyone understand the motion at this time?
Well, I, I would just like to clarify for the record that it's a motion that the BCC consider adopting a fee resolution, it's not that this board would be-
It's a motion to consider a resolution to adopt it. A fee structure, no, we're just discussing, we've gone through this, to adopt a fee, uh, fee structure that Lisa has recommended. Does everyone understand the motion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. I don't see any, all opposed?
And I can't amend it? I could amend the motion, but-
Well, you can.
No, if I may, just made one more, the very quick comment, I promise-
Okay, that's all right.
Is we have a $30 parking fine-
Yeah.
For illegal parking in South Walton County. It's not enforced well, it's $30, and we have constant problems with illegal parking. That's what I'm worried about here. You can have, if you have no real penalty and nobody really wants to impose a fine, they just want to say, hey, move it today, move it tomorrow, move it the next day. So that, that's all, I'd like to see us recommend they come up with some sort of a fine structure that's enforceable.
Lisa, and I, I guess I would like to address this really quickly, so just so you guys know, for the beach activities ordinance, we do have a fee resolution. Now, Governor, how could you mention, I guess, the judge having discretion? So if somebody contests that, the fee, the judge can set it anywhere from $500 down. Sorry, but if somebody doesn't contest it, that we have a, a set structure that they just go to the courthouse and pay it according to that. So, the BCC will assuredly pass a resolution setting the fee structure for this ordinance.
Okay, any other motions at this time regarding customary use ordinance?
I had one motion, and it's in keeping with what Celeste said about signage. I'd like to move that at the beach accesses that are, what's my right word, that are bordered by private property, that there be signage placed stating the specific prohibitions that we have listed. I think there's, there's going to be considerable confusion, and I would like the signage to say, private beach access, no consumption, no use of tobacco, no use of alcohol or illegal drugs, no umbrellas, no tents, no animals and fireworks. I think that's going to clarify this for the public and that we'll have a lot less sheriff calls and a lot of confusion. And I'd like, you know-
You're talking about signage produced by TDC-
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
At the beach accesses?
At the, at the private, at the private beach accesses.
Those are the ones that dump into private-
No, 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 I'm sorry, maybe I didn't make it clear.
Well, let's get her motion correct, okay.
When you have a beach access that is bordered by private property, which is going to be the private beach accesses, that there, that the TDC-
Where's the sign?
Right, that the TDC would erect signage-
Stating the activities permissible only and not permitted.
Right, right.
Does everybody understand the motion?
They're, but they're public beach access, even though they're by-
Yeah.
Private-
Right, right.
-property, the public, the accesses in most cases are public beach accesses because of, whether it's a, like these 180 or so accesses that we're talking about, that we really did, that is pub, your terminology saying private access is really a public access by private property.
All right, get, get your motion down there, see if you get a second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay. That at accesses, not private accesses, that-
Well, should, I should say public accesses.
At public accesses bordered by private property, that signage would be erected by the TDC that clearly stated what was permissible and what was prohibited on those beaches.
All right, does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second to the motion? I'm sorry? Okay, second to the motion. Discussion, yeah, start and turn down. Brenda?
I'm okay.
You won't discuss it more?
No.
Okay. Tammy?
No, no.
I just have a question. At the end of the public access, is that private or is that public? How does that, I guess I don't understand how it works.
Go ahead.
Well, what I'm thinking, and I live in an area where there's a lot of, you know, public accesses that are adjacent to, you know, that you go through a public access, but as soon as you're on the sand, you're on private area. So I would, the way I envision it is, you know, before you hit the boardwalk, there's a sign, which there are signs, and I think they just put some new signs out because of the, the new numbering of the accesses. So I would suggest that there's a sign next to the shower, they almost all have showers or a dozen, wherever there is a boardwalk that allows the public to go to the beach, where when you get down there on the end of the boardwalk, adjacent to either side, you've got privately owned beachfront.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
All right. Well, I was thinking, I don't do politics a whole lot, but I just had a flashback to sitting in this room, I was on the beach signage committee years ago. So, obviously signage and education are going to be an important part of this, so I agree generally with, with having some signage to that effect. I think that signage should reflect that we honor customary use on our beaches, so so long as it's not just a list of prohibited things, but saying that Walton County beaches are, are held in the public trust or something like that. Here's, but in the private portions of those, you're restricted to these items, I think that's good. I do also think that anywhere we can, we should consolidate signage, so that might, and I, I know from past experience, TDC rolls out new signs every few- So that might, and I know from past experience, TDC rolls out new signs every few years or what, I think I've worked with Jim on this, and he's nodding. So they probably have a revision of the big TDC sign already in the works for next year or two years or whatever their time period is. So maybe if we roll it into that they should address customary use and appropriate uses of private property on whatever the next version of that sign is, just so that we don't end up with additional signs by our ordinance. Because we also clutter our beaches in what used to be sea oats, as you come up to a beach access becomes a sign for this and a sign for that, and it just, it looks so good. So there's my caveat for that. I'd like to see that we coordinate with the TDC on their next printing of signs to address our ordinance.
I'm in favor of it, and unfortunately, I don't think we can wait a year or two till they replace signs. I think it needs to be done soon. Otherwise, we'll just have more conflict, but that's all I have to say about it.
I'm in favor, I have no complaints.
I'm in favor, but I guess this presupposes that private owners would have to mark their property. Otherwise, there would be no way that the public would have an idea which is private and what's public. So just to clarify that.
Am I, am I wrong in that that's already part of the, the county keeps up with what? I mean, there's a website that shows private, public. I've seen it anyway.
Right, and I think.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My point is a beach owner, I mean, excuse me, a beach visitor has no idea, doesn't have access to the online map when he goes to the beach. It comes down and says, good, I need to remember that if I'm on a private beach, I can't smoke, I can't drink. Then he walks down there and sets up. How does he know?
Yeah, I think that, I think that.
That's my question.
It's a separate issue.
You've got to. Yeah, so I mean, I'm for it, I'm gonna vote for it.
At any rate. My observation is that I think the public needs to be warned of private ownership strikes and this thing. My concern is, we got a bunch of signs, you know, they keep getting more and more, you know. I built the juvenile court once and I swore to them, I said, you're not gonna have any signs, especially those that say, don't do this, or no, or prohibited. In two years, the place was full of don'ts and noes and none. But anyway, that's a, that's just an observation. Okay, motion on the table, there's been a second discussion. All in favor of this particular motion? Okay, it carries, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, okay? The motion carries. Any other motions at this time?
Yeah.
I'll make it quick and just make the motion. I think hopefully, my explanation has occurred over the last several meetings. I move that we add a section, or add a paragraph under section two that reads, the right of private entities owning dry sand areas of the beach. And to use such, I'm sorry, let me get that right here. The right of private entities owning dry sand areas of the beach. Okay, the right of private entities owning dry sand areas of the beach to use such areas for any activity not prohibited by federal, state, or local government statute is hereby recognized and protected.
Does everyone understand the motion?
No, I don't, I don't understand. I'm still not, I'm looking where you're talking about, and so.
And I specifically propose inserting this in section two, the regulation of dry sand areas. And I'll suggest that we insert it after paragraph one and before the existing paragraph two. So paragraph one is the reference to the public's longstanding customary use of dry sand areas. And I know I said I wouldn't offer an explanation, but I believe I've been consistent in suggesting that the ordinance as written describes what the private property owner may not do, but it does not describe what the private property owner may do. And I think we talked at this meeting about the perils of a list of simply what you may not.
Where do you want this now? I'm confused too. Are you in section two?
Section two.
Paragraph what?
Well, it would be the new paragraph. I'm not replacing or striking.
I guess, we have seven.
It'd be paragraph seven.
Well, I'm suggesting it actually be paragraph number two, and we renumber the remaining paragraphs.
Under section two.
Yeah, under section two.
Under section two, paragraph two?
Inserting a new paragraph.
Then paragraph two, then paragraph three.
Okay.
Just pushing the others down.
Okay, you want to make this number two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the language again?
The language is, the right of private entities owning dry sand areas of the beaches to use such areas for any activity not prohibited by federal, state, or local government statute is hereby recognized and protected.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion? And where it will be. Is there a second to it? There's a second to the discussion, Brenda?
Well, I have concern that it's starting to dilute perhaps the customary use that we just passed, and then it starts taking away from that. And so I was gonna say for my last, kind of go over the reasons again of why the customary use was so very important. I'm sorry. Sleep at the job. You know, that, that it is so important on the protecting the rights of the public to use our beaches as in perpetuity and recognizing the Florida court's recognition of that use. And so because of those reasons that I've stated before, maybe will say for my ending comments, I would not be in favor of this motion.
Beth?
I'm sorry, Beth, close. If I'm understanding the motion correctly, you're simply stating that the property can be used for any legal right as long as you don't break a law, correct?
That's exactly my intent.
Okay, I understand it.
Well, I kind of agree with Brenda. I think it goes back to, I think the more concise and clear this ordinance is, the better, and I don't think this really helps any clarity, in my opinion, so I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Joe?
Yeah, I'll pass.
Mike?
Yeah, I think those rights obviously already exist to do whatever's legal. It muddies this ordinance that we've worked so hard to clarify, and it actually, I think it perhaps jeopardizes the very ordinance that we're, that we're trying to work out here. It just opens up other ways to try to potentially prohibit people from exercising their customary use of the beach. So especially since those rights already exist, that everyone already has those rights, I think is unnecessary.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I wonder if this part where it says the owners of property that contain a portion of the dry sand areas of the beach make any use of their property which is consistent with such public use, which is very limited by our definitions, and not calculated specifically, it doesn't say specifically, not calculated to interfere with the exercise of the right of the public to enjoy the dry sand area. Is your, am I allowed to ask him a question when I'm making my comments? Okay, is your intent to try to help the, again, the common interest community situation, David?
It's to, my intention is to try to protect the rights of any private property owner to use their property as they have traditionally used it here in Walton County.
All right, do you understand these answers?
I, yes, I agree with this motion completely because, just as Lisa just read, no individual group or entity shall impede or interfere with the right of the public at large. The rights of the private property owners have got to be protected. And by us simply stating in section two, paragraph four, a couple of little things that the public can't do on their property, that's really all we have in here for private property. I think we definitely need this, it's strong, and I think if we put that, I almost think that could be number one, and move number one to number two. Because I don't agree with it saying the right of the public at large. We've got to consider the private property owners in this.
I'll let my explanation stand. No comment.
I'll be for the motion and simply because it's a balance. It doesn't take anything away from the customary use that's still there. But by putting it in the resolution section, it creates, I think, a healthy balance to show that there's respect for the property owners. It in no way diminishes the language of what is already in this ordinance for customary use. But it provides some framework that I think is, is healthy. And I think it'll be a consideration that property owners will appreciate. They don't get anything extra from it, they just don't have anything taken as a result of it. I think it's a harmless, but a necessary one, and I support it.
Everyone understands the motion and the second? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, the motion carries.
Judge, you seconded that motion?
Lisa.
Okay, have you gotten through, carrying? Are you getting down?
From the judge.
Okay, yeah, I'll agree.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Any other motions regarding this, this ordinance that we're looking at, okay?
So I do appreciate the private property owners' rights being addressed in this document. I felt like they were already. But my motion would be that we, that we affirm that the primary focus of this document is affirming customary use. And so placing the provision that we just voted on ahead of provision number one, I think, is contrary to, to that. Maybe it was amended, I didn't hear that.
No, all I just suggested, I would like to see.
Do you have a motion, Mike?
No, it wasn't that.
It wasn't amended. Do you have a motion, a specific motion?
Yeah, my motion would be that if that were to stand, that it be placed behind the existing ordinance that we've already drafted.
It's not standing.
It's not standing? That motion didn't pass?
The motion, the motion passed.
He made mention of where it would be placed in the ordinance.
I quite deliberately placed it after the statement about customary use.
I just made a comment for this person.
Okay, so my motion is that it would be moved to paragraph seven.
There's a motion to end. Everybody understand what Mike's motion is? That the motion that was just passed, that was placed in paragraph two, be placed in paragraph seven. Is there a second to this motion? Pales for lack of a second, Mike. Okay, anybody else with any motions regarding this ordinance that we've been required to make recommendations of?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Hearing that there are no further motions, I would move that we submit to the county what we have drafted and that we spend an extended amount of time patting ourselves on the back, giving ourselves a standing ovation, giving ourselves a deep bow from the waist and a tip of the hat, and consider ourselves having completed our mission.
Is there a second to the governor's motion?
Second.
Are you unanimous? Are we unanimous?
This was a lot harder than the sign committee.
A privilege, just a moment. First thing, I want to thank the staff, everybody here. We're helping us through some really murky areas, you know. And I want to thank the public for your input, you know, and you've been. You've done, done a good service by coming here, giving us your thoughts. And especially, I want to thank this committee, all of the members of the committee, for dealing with the controversial issue in a sensible way and even with good humor. And, and being here, I note tonight that we are unanimous again, I mean, not unanimous, but we have a full committee. And I appreciate the fact that a lot of people have come from long distances to get here and, and you have worked very well recently in a very, in a very thorny issue. And again, it is simply recommendations. I will take the recommendations of this committee and present them at the next meeting of the DBC. And anyone that wishes to dissent on these can, as we voted to previously, dissent in a five hundred word dissent. And, and David, you still have your ten minutes available to dissent here in public on the record if you would like to use it.
Yes, sir, I would like to ask you one clarification.
Yes, sir.
And that is, the record of tonight's meeting, the minutes of tonight's meeting is fairly important.
Yeah.
Will we have an opportunity to review those before they are forwarded on?
Yes, you have, should be able to. Oh, I don't know.
I understand they can't be altered, but I think that the committee typically has the right to review the minutes and determine whether or not they are.
Mr. Chairman, don't you have to approve the minutes before they're submitted? What if you got them incorrect?
Yeah, I've got to disagree. I've got to disagree that the record of the meeting is the business of the committee.
Yeah.
I, I have an issue if we don't have an opportunity to review what came out of tonight's meeting. Of all of the effort that we've put in, and while I have a great deal of faith that the staff will capture this, we went through, I think, a dozen or probably eight or nine motions. I'm very interested.
They're not gonna be closed off to the public, you're gonna be able to see them, I don't, it's a question of when you're gonna see them.
I've received an answer to my question.
Okay. Yeah, no, you're, you'll get copies of that.
I have a question, please.
Yeah, I think, I think, go ahead.
Are we adjourned or adjourned?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I didn't.
We're free to talk with each other like other folks.
It's an informal conversation.
I just, this question's really for the legal. If for some reason the judge rules against customary use, does that wipe out everything we did?
For sure.
Whatever parts he wipes out.
We have not adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
We have not adjourned.
There's a second. One question for you.
No questions, just a comment and a thank you on behalf of the board. Thank you so much for doing what you've done.
I'd like to thank Judge for his absolute right.
We'd have riots.
I thank y'all for participating, and I can assure you that I'll do anything in my power to be sure that they consider every recommendation that's been put forward. So again, on behalf of the board, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, see you tonight.
Appreciate it, I learned a lot. Appreciate you working with me.
To get to know you. To get to know you.